Okay, we're actually gonna start off with reportable action out of the closed session meeting that just ended. With that, I'll let Chip, our city attorney, take over.
Mr. Mayor, reporting out of closed session concerning a threat of litigation received by the city, that direction has been provided by the Council on 5-0 vote to authorize me to provide 30-day notice of termination of the SCVB and Chamber contracts, and that I be authorized to meet with the SCV and Chamber about moving forward with any future action.
Okay, so with that, we're polling items six and seven off the agenda tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With that, could you do the roll call?
Councilmember Dearnis?
Here.
Councilmember Waite?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Potem Clark?
Here.
Mayor Toussaint?
Here. Stand for the pledge.
Please raise hand over your heart. Repeat after us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, we'll be moving on to public communications. Can we get a title readout?
Bear with me for a moment, I'm filling in as clerk tonight, so at this time, please direct comments to the City Council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to three minutes.
Okay, I believe our first speaker is Nancy Emerson. No, not on this, okay. I saw the question marks, I didn't know if that was one. Michael Baker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Club, Santa Barbara County. I just wanted to, you'll see me on a regular basis, this is an opportunity for me to report to the City Council about the programming that's happening with the Boys and Girls Club. We have expanded into Solvang, and will be opening, we already started a program this past, this last part of this last school year, on the middle school campus, and we'll be opening on the elementary campus here, starting this fall. Encourage each and every one of you, if you haven't seen the Boys and Girls Club in action, please come down and see it. As you may be aware, we have clubs in Carpinteria, Galida, the west side of Santa Barbara, Long Polk, Buellton. Most recently, our Buellton location has grown tremendously, we're hoping to get 20 kids enrolled in that program, we have 240 children enrolled. We're expecting a similar turnout here in Solvang. And all of our clubs work together, with the bottom line, trying to help those kids that need our services the most, so if you know of any child that-
Shirley Stacy.
Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Toussaint. I'm Shirley Stacy, I'm the city rep for the Library Advisory Committee of the county, and I'm just reporting on the meeting that we had in June, and I'd, first of all, just like to say how pleased I was that Robert Clark came to the last meeting, and also a Friends of the Library Board member. It really is, it helps so much, you know, when there are extra people coming in, you know, being made aware of what we do up there. I know Ryan used to come last year, and it just makes a nice difference to have other Funding, again, was the main topic of discussion. The county pledged matching funds for cities that funded a half of their deficits. Advisory Committee, I will have no problem if they're, with opening it up to see if there's others interested, I've been doing it a long time, and I, you know, but on the other hand, if there aren't others, and I, you know, and you want me to serve one more year, I also would be open to that. So thank you very much, and I think that's all, unless there's questions. No, okay, thanks.
Thank you. Kim Jensen.
Councilperson? I just want to ask two things. Number one, first of all, I'd like both Mr. Clark and Mr. Dearnis to come forward with the information that they provided last, their last meeting, saying where they got this information regarding how you are gonna take care of tourism, based upon your 15 minutes of looking on a internet, and that you can do a lot better than what we are already doing. I would like you to come through with that and give it to us, so we can evaluate it and review it as well. I want to see where you're coming from. And with you, Mr. Clark, please, if you could, Mr. Dearnis, if you could help us make sure that happens, is make sure that Mr. Clark would give us the information, and where he's getting his information regarding apples to cherries, or is it apples to apples? So if you're trying to compare us with small little towns, are you comparing us? And who are those people that you got this information from, and came about? Finally, it was interesting how, last week, last meeting, it was very emotional, you got emotional about Attar Dag, that home, for $2,000 to go to 10, and I felt that a couple places or entities here in this community did not get that money at all, and the Wind Ensemble didn't get anything. Yet, the previous meeting, you all gave an easy $25,000 to a bike, Rio Hondo company that is pro profit, for profit, and that's okay to do? And you did that on a whim, I think it was a fly. So I don't find, if that's your style of how we're gonna start running this business here of tourism, because you're doing it on a fly, I want to see your plans, because you haven't provided one plan yet. Let's hear what you're gonna do. That's all I have, thank you.
Let's get-
Mayor Toussaint, City Councilmembers, I am absolutely appalled the way you people have acted today in regards to the SCVB and the Chamber. You are a bunch of chicken S-SOBS. You have, I would say, virtually no idea of what the Tourism Council does in the city, or what the amount of income that is generated by the tourist industry. We have Mr. Johnson, who is a CPA, who's never really done anything with the tourist business. We have Mr. Clark, who is a, works as a representative in a retail trade, Nielsen Building Material. We have Mr. Toussaint, who has an IT business. We have Karen Waite, who is a compliance officer, senior compliance officer, at a job down in Santa Barbara. We have Mr. DeGennas, who, I have the foggiest idea what you do. Nobody really knows what you do, Chris. But none of you have any experience with the tourist trade, and I will agree with Mr. Jensen. We have a 15-minute summation that you got off the internet, show us what it is. You have absolutely no experience, none of you have any experience in the tourist industry, and promoting the tourist industry. And you are now going to come up and want to hire a new firm, who has absolutely no history of the city of Solvang, has no history of what we have gone through over the last 35 years to bring Solvang to what it is today. You are going to be up S Creek without the paddle, because we will drop off on our bed tax, we will lose bed tax revenue, we will lose sales tax revenue, and we're gonna lose market share to other communities in the Central Coast area. And then you're gonna be wondering, how come we have a shortfall of money? It might not be in the next six months, but it will be within a year. And I would say, thank you very much for listening to me, I will say that, but right now, I have absolutely zero respect for the Solvang City Council. Thank you.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to the item number two, City Manager's Report and Advance Calendar.
Ryan?
Yep.
I came to speak on item number seven.
So we polled item number seven. If you wish to say something during public comment, then I'll allow that right now.
David Rasmussen, a businessman here in Solvang. I'm here to ask you to keep funding the Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau, they've done a good job. We've been working at this for over 30 years. You have one of the best executive directors in the state, but you haven't been here looking long enough to really realize that. So I ask you all, Ryan is a friend, Robert is a brother, to keep the Solvang Visitors Bureau going. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, move on to item number two, City Manager's Report and Advance Calendar.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will be briefed this evening, I want to just bring to everybody's attention that at the last meeting, the City Council approved canceling the July 22nd meeting, so the second meeting of July will be canceled for a summer recess, and then we'll be back again on August 12th. At that meeting, we will have a substantive conversation, this is the second half of the wastewater treatment plant conversation. So any members of the public that are interested, that'll be all of the financial options ahead of you, impacts for different financing mechanisms that could possibly go into funding the wastewater treatment plant, and other alternatives. We've been working with the San Inez CSD on looking at those options, so that they're providing technical input as well, as well as being a part of the conversation on the financing, as they currently contract for 20% of the capacity in the city of Solvang's wastewater treatment plant. And then, we'll be back in, end of August, on the 26th, and that's when we will be bringing back the City Council's goals, so as we've talked about here recently, based on the goals set by the City Council at their June 22nd goal-setting session. On August 26th, we'll be coming back with detailed action plans and timeframes of how the city staff is gonna work with the City Council to really focus on our finances and raise new revenues moving forward on the three major goals, as well as the other important goals of the City Council. With that, that's my report for this evening.
Okay. With that, move on to the consent agenda. Would any councilmember like to poll any item from the consent agenda? And if not, I'll take a motion to-
I'll poll, I'd like to poll item number C, our voter number C.
Okay. Do you just have some corrections?
I just have some, I mean, just wanted to discuss it, I guess, with-
Okay, then item C?
Yeah, I'd like to poll item E. There's just one question I had, that I'd like to have addressed by City Manager.
Item C.
C and E.
C and E. Could we entertain a motion to approve the remainder of the items?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item C and E.
Okay, I'll second that.
Oh, that's me. Can I guess, can I get who was the motion? I'm sorry. Mr. Clark, and the second?
Ryan. The mayor.
Okay. Mayor Potem Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Dearnis?
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, minutes. Daniel, would you like to start?
Yeah, so my understanding is, this, this money, we can use this money for anything park-related, and we're being asked to dedicate the $200,000 to the, I guess it's the Olympic pool that they're putting at the high school, and Aquatics Center and whatnot. So I just wanted to bring it up and discuss, as a council, the possibility of taking part of those funds, as we have some needs in Sunny Field, I know there's some major repairs and maintenance we've looked at, is gonna have to be done, and maybe taking part of that, and using those funds as Solvang's, obviously, we've talked about it a million times, we don't have a lot of money, so this will give us some funds to repair that, and maybe giving them $100,000 instead of the $200,000, and repairing, you know, the major reconstruction that we have to do down there. So that's why I wanted to bring it out and discuss it before we adopt a resolution or anything. Don't know your guys' thoughts on it, I wasn't originally here when they discussed supporting it, not that I wouldn't support it, but I thought we should discuss it before we just pass it on.
That money comes from the state, is it matching money that comes from the state, correct?
Yes, so under Proposition 68, which was approved by the voters in 2000, and I want to say 16, off the top of my head, or, I'm sorry, 18, June of 2018, the state is issuing park bonds, and there's two pools of money. One is a per capita pool of money, and so each jurisdiction, based on population, will get a minimum of $200,000 of per capita park bond money. And then there's a second pot of money, that's for competitive grant applications. The San Inez Valley Aquatics Foundation, in partnership with the county, city of Buellton, and they're hoping, city of Solvang, is hoping that the agencies locally would commit or pledge their per capita funding as leverage against the competitive round of park bond funding, so that they can close the overall funding gap. They've also had somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.5 million of private money come in to help close that gap as well, and they believe that a competitive grant application between Buellton has agreed to be the lead on that competitive grant application, the lead agency, but it's really a partnership between Buellton, the county, the high school district, as well as Solvang. We did, last year, provide some seed, last year or the year before, provide some seed funding to assist them in some of their startup costs, in looking at the project, and doing some preliminary design work, and fundraising efforts. And so, the Prop 68 funding that's coming to the city of Solvang, the request has been that we would dedicate, or at least pledge, that $200,000 to the project. Of course, that is a pledge that really only comes to fruition, you would have a second decision to make if the competitive grant application, for some reason, were unsuccessful, or it changed the overall dynamics, and the City Council at a later date would have a second decision there on that funding, but otherwise, that is just grant funding that's coming to the city. One thing that was brought to my attention after publication of the agenda, if we were to, if the Aquatics Foundation with Buellton in the lead were successful on the grant application, then the city would have a 20% match requirement with our $200,000, so it would be $40,000 of cost to the city, as opposed to just $200,000 of money that we otherwise wouldn't be getting in case to those uses.
Thanks for the summary. I'm fine with what it is, as is, I think it'd be more appropriate that, you know, staff takes their retreat and comes back with some of the strategies that are gonna be employed through the budget and stuff like that, that you can have more discussion there, but, I'm sorry, what's that?
On this item.
On this item. Oh, okay. So then, let's take the public comment now.
Yeah, please.
All right. Kyle Lobello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers. Just to clarify, Buellton has been asked, again, by the foundation on the same per capita pot of state bond funds, and one of the stipulations with, with most state bonds, and this one included, the monies have to be for land acquisition or new construction. So when Sunny Fields was built, then there was Proposition 12, and so monies were able to be used to build the park. Unfortunately, there's not too many bonds there to repair things, and so we're, we were in the same condition there, we'd love to have some of that funds in Buellton to repair different park construction or buildings, but we don't have anything that's eligible for that, and we don't have any land to acquire for new parkland. So the way that the Buellton Council viewed that in discussing it, was that this was state funds that are per capita, that otherwise would not be able to be used by our city. And so I think that's the same request the foundation has made of you as well. In addition to that, the competitive grant, with the kind of collaboration that this grant application would have, that is much more competitive in terms of the state standings. They like to see regional and cooperative groups submitting these things, that would be used by the whole community, and not just one small entity of that. And as part of that, if that grant is successful, there is a, would be a program advisory committee, and that would be a person from, a representative council member and staff member from each city, as well as YMCA and other user groups, to be able to dictate policy and programming for the complex. So if there's any other questions, I might be able to answer, I'd be happy to.
Does anyone have any further questions?
No. I appreciate that, Kyle, thank you.
Do we have a motion approving item C?
I move that we approve item C.
I'll second.
Well-
Do you have any further?
Really quick comment, are we approving item C based upon Mr. Johnson's amendment?
I didn't amend it, I was just-
He just pulled it for discussion.
I just pulled it for discussion, so there's no amendment.
Okay, so we're approving it as, as is, as we-
Councilmember Dearnis?
Yes.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Okay, item E. Chris, you polled that item?
Yes, I did. I had a couple of questions for staff, specifically, now that we've got well number 22 online, and the HCA, or Hans Christianism Well, how much water are they producing, and will that potentially replace the water that we're buying from ID number one? And this goes to, I guess, the first section, A, was this purchased water from ID number one?
So just to clarify, so that I heard the question correctly, well 22, as it starts producing, will that reduce the amount of water that we need to purchase from ID1?
And our dependence on it. My understanding is that it can, has a maximum potential of like 1,000, is it 1,000 gallons a minute?
No, it's less than that, but yes, it is intended to reduce our reliance on purchase of water from ID1. What this item is calling out, is just a clarification from the budget adoption hearing on June 24th, there was a question about a line item of 409,000 for purchased water costs. We're reducing that to 116,000. Between the June 10th preliminary budget hearing, and the June 24th budget adoption hearing, we got word from ID1 that they were gonna credit us some prior acre feet of water in exchange, and therefore reduce the amount that we would need to purchase. We do still expect some purchase of water in this coming year, that's the budget of 116,000, and that's mostly for the meter charges, just to have those meters. After we get some, you know, some performance from well 22, and have a better understanding of what the real production out of that well will be, it is possible in future years that we could potentially request the ID1 reduction in those meter sizes, which would save on just that fixed cost on the meters.
Exactly.
But until we have performance, you know, numbers, in order to confirm how much well 22 will produce, then we just don't have enough reliability at this point in time in order to completely eliminate this expenditure.
So just to summarize really quickly, to, I think, to get to the bottom of Chris's question, is what we're doing is, we're kinda doing a trade deal with ID number one, where we give them some of our state water allocation in return for water during the state water shutdown.
That wasn't my question, the question is, what are we doing to reduce our dependency on ID number one? I understand the current plan?
So that is how we're doing it. That's, one of the ways is how you manage the logistics of water, and with that, you have the management of state water, you're gonna bank it all upstream, which we can't even take when state water pipeline is shut down. Instead, we're doing a trade deal with ID number one, so that we then, you know, receive, you know-
And I appreciate that, that in-depth explanation, what I'm really looking for is, what is our strategy going forward to reduce and perhaps eliminate that dependency? Is there another well that we can look into drilling?
Well, we're currently in the process of looking at two river wells, and we're progressing in those efforts as well. in those efforts as we speak, which would be intended to further reduce our dependence on any outside water, water independence, I guess.
Perfect, thank you. And then I have another question. This has to do with salaries and benefits. I'm a little confused about this section, because it sounds to me like we weren't, or the city was not spending all the money that had been allocated for salaries and benefits, at least according to this little table here on page forty-seven. Is there a reason why we're increasing?
What page of the packet are you referring to, Chris?
Forty-seven. I don't know what it is on yours, but it's my page forty-seven.
So, how come we weren't spending all of the money on salaries and benefits?
Well, it suggests here that we're not spending all of it, and yet I think...
It suggests that we've had budget savings, so based on what was budgeted, we didn't spend the full amount. There's always some fluctuations, and we have not done, as far as I know, any detailed analysis of why we were not hitting right on target, but there's always fluctuations in staffing amount, you know, staffing numbers. Somebody leaves or retires throughout the course of a year, and you run a recruitment, so you have a vacancy for some period of time. It can cause you to come in under budget, and so I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it mostly does, and I guess the second part of the question is, why are you excluding the CalPERS pension costs? Wouldn't that increase the costs here, too?
I believe that's the, I'll have Xena help me here, but I believe that just refers to the CalPERS unfunded liability component that is a, you know, fixed ramp-up cost that's identified in there.
So yes, the way that this was structured, in terms of financials, was pulling out the CalPERS costs, the regular CalPERS costs that are going up at a different rate, and CalPERS unfunded liability as separate items, just because it's a different financial analysis. So this item here was the combination of salaries and benefits that are other than CalPERS-related costs.
Does that include OPEB?
That's split out, too.
No, it's split out, too.
Can you speak, make sure you speak?
Remember on the budget, it was split out, so that's what they're saying.
There's three pieces to the CalPERS, the CalPERS unfunded liability and OPEB. I wanna make this distinction, not necessarily for us on the council, but for the people watching from home or in the audience. I don't think people realize the costs are going up with CalPERS and why. So, the more times that we drill this, you know, expose this, I think the more people appreciate the difficult decisions that we're trying to make with respect to budget. Our expenses are going up faster than our revenue, and we've got a problem. Thank you.
Okay, can we move to accept Item E?
I move that we accept Item E.
Also, so moved in second.
Councilmember Guernas?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Toussaint?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first item we have is number four, the sign ordinance review. Could we get a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Holly, on planning director, city of Solvang. We're here tonight to review the proposed edits to the Solvang sign ordinance, provide input, and direct staff to prepare a zoning ordinance text amendment to bring to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation. And upon their review and recommendation, the sign ordinance will be brought back to council for a first reading. If the council approves of changes tonight, it will be possible to calendar this for the Planning Commission meeting of August 5th. As mentioned, the staff report, Solvang sign standards are a hybrid of typical requirements for sign size and lettering and placement, and with a unique requirement in solving for a particular type of design and aesthetic. Solvang's had a sign ordinance since cityhood, and Solvang's roots are in the county ordinance, and the practice of review and approval that we have followed since that time comes from that source. By nineteen eighty-eight, the design guidelines were adopted, and the requirements for issues such as lettering, illumination, and fasteners, in the TRC especially, became common practice. All cities have some sort of regulation for signage. Some of this is due to legal reasons and how to allow the creative tension of free speech versus regulating that for consistency, appearance, and safety. The history of the review process here in Solvang is that it has been fairly consistent over time since nineteen eighty-eight. There was, when an application came in, there was a review process that was done internally, and then it would go to a review board, if it was, especially in the village commercial area. This originally was called the Architectural Review Board, and that was a county practice, and then it became our own Board of Architectural Review in the nineteen eighties. There's also references to the need for preservation and distinct look of a commercial district in our community design element of the general plan. In twenty eighteen, the former city council sought design ordinance revisions to improve the permitting process as part of an overall design guidelines and community design element update. A staff released an RFP in March of this year to obtain proposals from planning and design firms. After several consultants communicated with the city that the task was too large, and the budget, for the budget and timeframe, staff was directed to do a minor revision to accomplish some of the streamlining goals that the council wished to accomplish, and they did that in-house with the, with the, the city manager's input, and also with the assistant planner, Brenda Messer. We received several comments from community members very recently about this process. We will be incorporating those comments into our larger updating processes. Some of the comments were design-related. Attached in your packet, you have a redlined version of the changes that we have, we are bringing to you for recommendation. There, this does represent a fundamental change, the review and approval process for the city. This allows for administrative approval, that is, over-the-counter approval, of signs that meet our requirements. No Board of Architectural Review will be needed, and in addition, the following changes are proposed: elimination of standards for signs on benches, signs on kiosks, some addressing of the flagpoles and flag requirement, and a relocated sign will be considered a new sign, but will be reviewed by the planning staff for approval. All, as you probably looked at from your redlined version, it's a little chaotic-looking. A lot of that will straighten out with the cleaned-up version, in terms of numbering and section headings, and that's the nature. Staff has determined that best practices from other cities should be applied in this case, and has determined the following, that these changes that we're recommending gives applicants the path to a streamlined approval process, and that we have the in-house experience to review signs over the counter, as Brenda Messer has been reviewing signs for the BAR for the last several years, and that we will work closely with any design team hired in the future for updating the design guidelines and the community design element to ensure consistency within those documents. Clarification is the type of style that would work best with the community, as well as add elements to deliver a clean graphics package to the ordinance and to the public. Upon council's review and recommendations, staff will bring this to the Planning Commission for their recommendation to change the zoning ordinance to reflect this new process. If the Planning Commission recommends these changes, it will be brought before council then for a first reading, as this conforms to the path of changing the zoning ordinance as outlined in eleven seventeen-three of the zoning ordinance. For your alternatives, the council could, after direction and discussion, direct staff to bring forward the draft zoning ordinance to the Planning Commission. They could, you could request the draft sign ordinance be brought to consultants, who would be selected to revise and update the design guidelines and the community design element. So in other words, put this exercise off until a later time this year, where we select these consultants. The council could convene a subcommittee to review the recommended changes to the sign ordinance, or that you can do any of the above and direct additional changes to the proposed sign ordinance update. This concludes my staff report. I'm certainly available to answer any questions, and Brenda Messer is also here from my staff. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
So, I, basically, what you're trying to do, what I see is it being streamlined, so that only exceptions to our ordinance would come before the Board of Architectural Review, so that they wouldn't, they wouldn't be dealing necessarily day-to-day with applications for business.
If a sign meets our current standards, then that will be an in-house review. There are other tasks that will be left to the BAR to perform, such as any kind of sign program for a larger center, any appeals to our decisions that an applicant may disagree with, any approval of murals. Also, just if it's a bigger project, as part of the overall design package that would be looked at anyway by the BAR, signs would be included in that, too. Other than that, if it meets our standards, it will be subject to an in-house review at this point.
Okay, and then, I had asked earlier, but I just wanted to confirm that the Board of Architectural Review has not yet seen this. This is the first time seeing it, was...
This is, this is just, this is coming before council tonight for review and consideration. There will be a process where it will go to Planning Commission, and they will, they will see that, and everyone here is seeing this for the first time tonight. Now, council has had a brief look at this early on for comment, but this is the first time, yes.
Okay, yeah, my comments are based, because I know that they, the Board of Architectur, excuse me, the Board of Architectural Review and members of our Planning Commission have been involved with the Board of Architectural Review and the decision on signs for many years, and some of them even wrote the first sign ordinance, so I just wanted to ensure the public that you do have two boards that will be involved in this, if need be. Correct?
Certainly, the city council and the Planning Commission are gonna be involved in this, 'cause it requires a change to the zone text, and so the process under our code, as required, is Planning Commission and then city council. This was really more a first check-in with city council, to see is there any direction that the council would like to provide. The changes under this ordinance, as Holly just described, are really procedural in nature. So the code lined out that everything would, I mean, it would come to us, we would do administrative review, determine, yep, your sign meets the standards, we'll put you on the next BAR meeting. That could be thirty days from then. We have a BAR meeting, and then under BAR rules, then there's a ten-day waiting period for any challenge to that. So, signs that we were already determining from a staff administrative level meets all of our requirements, could then take upwards of forty more days for a small business owner to have to wait before they could go hang their sign. So this recorrects that. Certainly, under the design guideline update, that's a broader conversation that would be engaged with the BAR, Planning Commission, city council, and the community at large, because that really does speak to more of the architectural styling that has come to make Solvang famous.
So I believe the intention here with staff, their goal was to kind of take care of some of the low-hanging fruit with regard to clean up our sign ordinance a little bit, while we're still pushing out for an RFP for the design elements and sign ordinance update.
Yes, yes, sir.
Are there any questions of the staff report?
No, I'm just, I'm just happy that this is gonna speed things up and make it easier, so I'm very, very pleased with this.
Well, I do have a question.
Okay, question?
It's a quick question regarding the difference between you giving this, directing staff to bring forward a zoning ordinance for the Planning Commission to review and recommend, versus going to a consultant. What advantage does a consultant bring to this process?
I would have to say that in my experience, a sign ordinance, overhaul of the sign ordinance is a fairly heavy lift for most cities. I just saw the other day that city of Merced had even hired a consultant, and that's not a tourist destination or a wealthy town. That said, part of that is some of the legal cases that have been decided at the Supreme Court level. I think there's cities that want to make sure that when they update their sign ordinance, that's, you know, that's important. I think the consultant brings a wide variety of experience in working with other jurisdictions to make sure that what they would present before us would be appropriate for us, tailored for us, and they have the higher-powered software and graphics to make an end product that is easily understandable to the public and hopefully flexible for staff to use. So that would be the, that would be the advantage at this point. We are, my understanding of the task that was in, for me, was to try to streamline the process where possible, given the in-house talent that we already have. And so that really results in the product that you're looking at tonight.
Thank you for the complete answer, and by the way, thank you for the work that you did already.
The redlining indicates just how...
It was a long time in coming, and I appreciate that.
Only fifteen thousand words.
Exactly.
Well, and that's a sign ordinance. There's a lot to cover, and just about everybody's sign ordinance is fairly lengthy.
So if there's more questions of staff, I'd like to move to public comment. Okay, with that, we have Nancy Emerson.
Good evening, Mayor Toussaint and council members. I was looking at the sign ordinance with eyes of the Save Our Stars Committee of WeWatch, and it looks to me like it's quite well organized in terms of that issue already, and quite simple, because when you get to the style section, every style uses item number three for illumination, and that helps to make it easy to find things. It's interesting to look at an ordinance, because it's kind of a complicated document. It's a document that you read all the time. And so I said to myself, what's important about this? And it seems to me there were three major sections in it. If one could see that, then it's easier to read, that there's standard regulations, and they're divided into the TRC and others. And then there's sign standards by type, and then finally, the application process. And so, once you understand that, you know, having lots of sections becomes clearer. And it looked to me as if the signage brochures that are being given to the public mean that many times, a person working on a sign would not necessarily ever have to go into the sign ordinance itself. And I think that would be a help to somebody working on a sign, not have to read through the entire ordinance. So those are my comments, but I was impressed with the work in the streamlining. It seems to me it's moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Joan Jamison. Susan Bott.
Mine's very quick, 'cause Nancy pretty much said it all. Save Our Stars Committee with WeWatch, we try to help people avoid light pollution. And by keeping the lighting parts of the ordinance as it was, I think you're helping to accomplish that. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Williams.
Good evening, Mayor Toussaint and city council. I'm Susan Williams. I'm a resident and a business owner in the city of Solvang. I was on the sign updating committee. I can't remember how long ago it was, and it took a very long time to make some changes to the current sign ordinance. And I think that the staff has done an excellent job. I really like the way that the process has been streamlined. It's gonna make it a lot easier for businesses. There was just one phrase that was in the sign standards by type that has been deleted, and it's, it appeared under section A, B, C, K, and L, but the statement is, "Within the village area, signs shall be designed to enhance the special character of the village and the buildings on which..." and the buildings on which they are placed. Individual lettering and the traditional old world style is preferred." And I would really like to see that kept in the sign ordinance. I think it's important. And it doesn't specifically say that at the very beginning of the sign ordinance. And sometimes you do have to look at that. So I would just like to see that kept in. And my other comment about this is, I really feel there should be some kind of an inspection process after people install their signs. Because there have been instances where the B A R has approved signs and then you go and you look at the business and you're going, that is not how we approved it. The sign is too high. It might be not in the same place. So it does happen and I think that's a part of the process that has been lacking in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get.
Mayor Tucson, City Council members, in regards to this, the only two comments I'm going to have. One is that not only should the Planning Commission be involved in the review of the redlined ordinance, you should also include the B A R because they were very instrumental in this project also. The other comment I'm going to make, I am going to agree with Susan in that one of the major problems is that on a number of occasions, the B A R and the Planning Commission approved signs and nobody went and reviewed the installed signs. And they were complete, I won't say completely different, but they were either larger, located in different spots, or did not meet what was originally approved in the first place. There needs to be an enforcement policy included and to make sure people are following the rules. And once their signs are approved, that they install what they have been approved. And I thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take this back to the council for discussion action. Is anyone that would like to start?
Yeah, I think it's a very nice product and very, very good job. Nice job. I agree with a number of the public comments. I'd like to make sure that we do also maintain our focus on the old world charm. Although I really like the product, I wish that the Board of Architectural Review and Planning Commission had been more involved in the crafting of this. But hopefully, they will be involved going further. And that's what I have to say about that.
Daniel?
Again, I think it's great. It's going to streamline it a lot. If, you know, it seems like to include the preferential lettering or the paragraph that Susan shared, I'd have no problem including that in there. And then inspection of signs, I don't know that that's exactly a sign ordinance or it's involved in the sign ordinance. I don't know if that's something separate or if we have to include that in the sign ordinance or if.
Does it take a complaint?
Well, it could be a complaint. Could it be code enforcement? David, if you want to chip in on that?
It could be either way. I think what both of the public comments were was more just after approval. Once a sign's installed, just to double-check that it meets that whatever the applicant had submitted. And that's something we can administratively do. You're correct. It wouldn't need to be in the ordinance.
Brenda, has that been done or is that done?
Council Mayor Brenda Messer, Assistant Planner. After a B A R meeting, each applicant gets an action letter which states the following steps to be taken. And I've added a clause in my letters to call for inspection once they've installed a sign or painted the building. I think I've had two requests for an inspection. So they're supposed to do their work within six months of that approval, so we try to follow up on those items. Several times, the applicant has come in with a little tweak to their application. If it follows the guidelines, then we go ahead and approve that at the counter. So when it does not comply, then it goes to an enforcement issue. Several times, there's members of the public or the B A R or Planning Commission that notices something that has been installed without the proper approval and it'll go to an enforcement phase. But again, we do add it to each letter. And so further, if this ordinance does get passed, I think we'll refine some language with me. After giving them so many days to install that sign, I'll go and make sure that what has been installed is what was approved.
Great. Perfect. Thank you. Chris?
I appreciate everything that Ms. Owens has done. I think it's great work. I'm a little confused about alternative number two though, because it seems either, I'm not sure. Is it necessary to go forward, go further and ask a consultant to come in and help? Or is this something we can do in-house? I'm confused.
As of right now, it's something we have done in-house. These are just policy alternatives to, you know, for council consideration. If you wanted to go in a different direction, that's an alternative you could employ.
Well, certainly, this is something we could adopt quickly and at least that would achieve, get us halfway there. For example, whatever the full direction would be. This gets us further along that path, is what I'm hearing. That is correct.
So like I said earlier, this is kind of like cleaning up some of the low-hanging fruit to kind of give a little relief.
But we still have. Question, where do we want to go from here then?
Well, we already have in the budget for, in RFP, I believe, already out there for design elements and the sign ordinance. And I'll just remind you, I think our design elements were last updated in, was it 1988? So they probably need an update.
They absolutely do. And that's why I was confused in terms of this list of alternatives. I agree. I think this is a great first step.
Yeah. I think this is a great first step. I think we've received some really good public comment tonight. And I really like this idea around, you know, that Nancy had about the having a little handout. I don't know if you made some notes about that, that might help some people navigate quickly through the sections. We do have it.
Yeah, we have that already.
So it's just not in here in the, okay, all right. So I'm sorry, were you asking that we make some changes to that handout or, okay, all right. That's what I thought you were requesting. Sorry. And then I'm okay with Susan Williams' comment about those sections there. And I mean, I'm sure we can obviously find a way to include the B A R in, you know, making any final revisions to the sign ordinance for the council to approve.
If that's the direction council wants to provide us, we would be happy to. As of right now, the path, at least that is before you on the staff report and is recommended, would be to go for purposes of speed because it's really more of an administrative processing modification of the ordinance would be to go to Planning Commission in August and then come back to council soon thereafter as it's able to. Now, if council wants to provide direction for us first to go to the B A R to get their input, we're happy to do that.
No, I don't think it's necessary. The other point.
The B A R could always give feedback at the public meeting.
Exactly.
So, okay.
And like I said, the other point that Ms. Williams made, I think was valid and you have that written down, correct?
Uh, yes, would you like a copy?
Please.
Yes.
Okay, David's got it. David's got it, Ms. Williams. Thank you very much. That was a good point.
So it looks like we, let's see, I'll look at the options that we have on the table here. So I think we have item number one, which seems like we're all on the same page with direct staff to bring forward a draft zoning ordinance for the Planning Commission review and recommendation. And then we also have having staff move forward with the design guidelines and the sign ordinance update, which we already put in the current budget, right? So I'll move that we move forward with those two items. Okay, so moving to second.
I'll second that.
Mayor Tucson? Yes. Councilmember Dernis?
Yes.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Clark?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. All right, with that, we'll move on to item number five. Can we get a title readout and staff report?
Resolution requesting the County of Santa Barbara take actions to exclude commercial cannabis cultivation that may impact the Solvang area. The item is to consider adoption of a resolution in opposition of cannabis cultivation activities in the unincorporated areas of the San Inez Valley and the potential for serious public health, safety, and welfare issues.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the county adopted a cannabis ordinance in 2017 which requires various levels of land use permit for cannabis cultivation on ag-zoned lands in the county. The city is virtually entirely ringed by ag-zoned lands of the county. While the county's ordinance was adopted in 2017, they actually did not approve any applications until earlier this year. There was an application immediately adjacent to the north side of the city that your council considered commenting on back in December. And your council actually approved a resolution which went to the Board of Supervisors expressing particular concerns, including about impacts to rural residential neighborhoods, including from vehicle traffic, offensive odors, and other potential impacts. That went to the Board of Supervisors in January. And at its meeting in January, the Board of Supervisors actually more broadly directed the county Planning Commission to take another look at permitting of cannabis cultivation, in particular, on what are called ag-1, 5, 10, and 20-zone parcels. The Planning Commission took a look at that and made a recommendation that goes to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow to require a conditional use permit for ag-1, 5, 10, and 15-acre parcels, I'm sorry, 20-acre parcels. You've subsequently received a request from the City of Carpinteria, which held hearings. Carpinteria has similarly a tourist economy and has had impacts, probably greater actual impacts because during an interim period, there has been significant cannabis cultivation within the Carpinteria area. Their request letter, which came to the mayor and city manager, is attached here too. I took that resolution and largely used it to create a resolution that applies for the City of Solvang and expresses to the Board of Supervisors that you would like them to take action to exclude cannabis growth essentially in the area around the City of Solvang. Again, the San Inez Valley and makes reference to the San Inez Community Plan area as the area that you would be seeking exclusion. And I would present this to you and if you have any other direction, we can certainly change the resolution in any way. Because of the timing on this, the board actually requires, the Board of Supervisors require that they receive any written comment by noon on the Monday before the Tuesday meeting. Or later than that. So I would urge, if you want to adopt this resolution, you also authorize the city manager to personally take it to the board and express this provision on behalf of the city.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the staff report?
Yes. So we had originally adopted Resolution 18-1068. What is this resolution? This is adoption of Resolution number?
19, next in order.
19 dash.
So I believe the resolution you're probably talking about is the one that came up in December of last year. Is that what we're referring to? December 10th? So that item came up last year with regard to the item going on in the.
Right now, yeah, prohibiting that ag-1, 5-zone. So I'm looking for a number for this resolution that's being put out there for us to adopt.
We do the next sequential number after it's been approved or adopted by City Council.
Okay.
So 19 designates the year and then it's just sequential number.
I just didn't know if there had been assigned a number to it yet.
Not yet.
So if you move the motion tonight, you would move, you know, to adopt Resolution 19, next in order. Are there any other questions of the staff report? Okay, seeing none, we'll take this to public comment. First item, first person I have is Jeff Jacobson.
Hello, Mayor Tucson, members of the council. My name is Jeff Jacobson. I live at 1,000 Freedensborg. Last time I was here was December 2018 to thank the council for issuing unanimous resolution in opposition to a commercial cannabis facility proposed on Freedensborg immediately adjacent to Sunrise Village and the College Canyon communities in Solvang. Since then, our neighborhood has worked to gather signatures and urged the county to amend the cannabis ordinance. We have over 370 people in our group now. They're mostly within walking distance to the proposed site with the full range of opinions on cannabis in that group. 330 of the people in our group asking the county for a change are, list their home as Solvang. And so I thought it was important to bring it back to you. And I just wanted to show a map that you can pass around as to show how densely our group is located around the site and they are marked with a red dot. How unanimous we are parcel by parcel. There's been a lot of progress though, and we're hopeful that tomorrow, at the Board of Supervisors' hearing in Santa Maria, we'll get some meaningful remedies to a wholly inappropriate oversight in the county ordinance that allows commercial-scale cannabis operations to land in the middle of and adjacent to residential neighborhoods inside the urban rural boundary. The resolution up for consideration tonight is in line with similar unanimous resolutions from the City of Carpinteria, the City of Guelda, the Guelda Chamber of Commerce, neighborhood ag and vintner groups that have come up throughout the county. More importantly for you though, this resolution, if Sunrise Village, College Canyon, and Freedensborg are representative of Solvang, has a near unanimous support of your constituents. I urge you to adopt this resolution tonight and deliver it tomorrow to the Board of Supervisors so that it can help us get some meaningful remedy in our neighborhood and for our city. Thank you.
Hank Comber.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Good to see you again. I saw you all on the Fourth of July Parade. It's very nice. I too echo basically everything that Mr. Jacobson said. And I support our city manager going to the meeting tomorrow. I think it's really important to have representation from the city there at that meeting. That'd be great. So I urge you to pass this resolution. Most of your constituents feel the same way, I'm sure. And then just a sidebar thing, I just want to, I think you know that I'm all for Solvang, having paid parking. Passa Robles just passed it. They started the process of looking into paid parking last May and they're implementing it starting August 1st. So I just wanted to pass that on. If I reinvent the wheel, we can just look over there. But anyway, I appreciate everybody's work today and our tourist industry's rocking, it seems like to me. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Carolina Bate.
Thank you for allowing me to speak with you. Every city in Santa Barbara wants to help their homeless population. And the first logical step is to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place. Many of the homeless are addicted to drugs and they began by smoking marijuana at a younger age, gradually becoming more addicted to more dangerous drugs. Many of those drugs were brought through our southern border by cartels and smugglers, which is why it is so important to support President Trump, build the wall, and fix our completely broken immigration system. The argument is made that legalizing marijuana will not increase its use. That contradicts common sense because anytime something goes from being illegal to being legal, it becomes more common. Also, the argument is made that it will be extremely regulated. But again, reality tells a different story. On May 23rd, the Santa Barbara news press had a story regarding students in a Santa Barbara high school who were at a teacher's house with marijuana. Will it really generate revenue for the city? Has the cost of increased law enforcement and homelessness, as well as complaints about the odor and other health-related and quality-of-life nuisance issues been subtracted off of that revenue? Once marijuana has become economically rooted in a community, with groups having expectations that it will continue, jobs and bureaucracy based on sales, production, and regulation, it becomes practically impossible to get rid of it. And what if all of that anticipated revenue never happens? And now the city is stuck with this problem. But more importantly, how can you put a price on a broken line? But more importantly, how can you put a price on a broken life that began as a young person smoking in high school or college? It would send a powerful leadership message to all of the young people in the community, especially junior high and high school, which is a very susceptible age group, that the City of Solvang strongly rejects the use of any kind of mind-altering substance in the community. We believe that because God chose to create each of us in His own image and likeness, He endowed us with our most noble faculty, our ability to reason. Marijuana causes people to give up the ability to make choices that are under the control of reason, and therefore leads people to behave and act in ways that are undignified for a human being, as well as dangerous to themselves and others. Please weigh everything carefully in the balance when you are thinking of allowing this into our community, and you will find that it is not worth the risk. Thank you for listening, and may everyone have a good evening.
Thank you. Linda Smith.
Hi, I'm Linda Smith, and I'm speaking as a resident. They say picture's worth a thousand words, so I think that helps me be a little more articulate. I wanted to point out, give you a really nice copy with the zoning on there, and point out the degree to which the Ag Two lines up, actually is touching the historical district, the San Ynez National Landmark Historical District. I think it's an important asset for Solvang, and I just want you to keep your eye on what might happen to that property around it. Because it's Ag Two, I don't know the degree to which the, the Board of Supervisors is considering having CUPs for Ag Two, but I think it's important to request it for the whole San Ynez Valley Community Plan. And that, that's the point. I think we might get some bans on the smaller Ag Ones, but I think the Ag Twos could cause some problems. There aren't that many, but those are really right up against the mills. So I support you in the resolution, and I hope you will pass it tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take this back to the council for discussion action. Who would like to start?
I'll go ahead. Um, well, I would like to make a motion to pass this resolution that the City of Solvang and the Council of Solvang request the County of Santa Barbara Board of Supervisors to take action to exclude commercial cannabis cultivation in the San Ynez Valley.
Okay. Uh, so, I think we, if you want that to happen, we also are beneath a timeline where we would need to authorize the City Manager to present the said resolution, right?
Yes.
Is it imperative that it be the City Manager, or some other messenger?
It'd be better if the City Manager...
Yeah, correct.
I'd, I'd like to make a different motion. I'd like to suggest that we simply adopt items one, two, and three.
Staff recommendation, one, two, and three?
Yes.
Okay. I'm, I'm okay with that. I'll second that.
That's fine, that includes the resolution. Yeah. Just gives more detail to the resolution.
Counsel member Dernis?
Yes.
Mayor Toussaint?
Yes.
Council member Waite?
Yes.
Council member Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Clark?
Yes.
Sorry, pass five oh?
Yes, carries five oh.
With that, we'll take a ten-minute bathroom break, since it's nearly eight.
Number eight, could we get a title readout and staff report?
Local Agency Formation Commission Agricultural and Open Space Policies. Discuss and provide staff direction on our response to proposed changes and revisions to LAFCO agricultural and open space policies. And if you provide me just one second, I'll get to my report here. So it recently came to our attention that this week on July 11th, the Santa Barbara County LAFCO will be considering on what is now their published agenda, a receive and file report to review the agricultural and open space policies and recommend considering adoption of recommendation for modification or revisions to those policies. So back in 2018, the Santa Barbara County LAFCO on the advice or after receiving a white paper from Cal LAFCO related to preservation of agricultural and open space, began the process of considering modifications to their policies and will be bringing that forward at their July 11th meeting. The city of Solvang received a letter in March of 2019 and taking full issue or taking full responsibility there seems to be just one of those items that was fumbled in the transition from an interim manager to myself. And so we were not in by the May 15th, 2019 comment period. Once it was brought to our attention here in recent weeks, we decided to put it on the agenda tonight at least in case the council wanted to take any position here on the policy. As I understand the policy considerations by LAFCO, it would make development as well as annexation of agricultural and open space lands a little bit more difficult in Santa Barbara County as it relates to spheres of influence and areas that are not already within a city's boundaries. And so just for a little bit of scope, the city of Goleeda recently took formal action to support the position that is being advocated by the Environmental Defense Centers, Open Space Preservation and Education Network were open for the policy changes. So Goleeda is in support. The city of Lompoc did the opposite. They took formal position in opposition of the changes, recognizing that it may make future annexations or development proposals a little bit more difficult. And the city of Bulton has stayed neutral on the matter as of last week when I spoke with their new city manager. So ultimately, this item is just seeking some council direction related to whether or not the council would like to take any formal position one way or the other, or provide any now last minute comments to Santa Barbara LAFCO related to the policy change considerations going to their body this week. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Are any questions of the staff report?
Yeah, actually, maybe I'm not saying that, but what is the impact to the city of Solvang if we take one position or the other? The pros and cons, in other words?
So given the late timing of us coming to this issue, we have not done any analysis on any pros or cons of this.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure I didn't miss it.
So some of this does, you know, support strengthening some of the policies at LAFCO to make it harder for annexation. So if you had desire in annexing, then you probably wouldn't want to adopt or support this. That would be an example of an impact. Are there any other questions of the staff report? Okay. With that, we'll move on to public comment. I have one speaker slip. Susan Bott.
This time, I'm only speaking for myself. I would like Solvang City Council to issue a letter to LAFCO similar to the one that was sent from the city of Goleeda. I think you all saw those and which was supporting the EDC's longer, much longer letter and which it also contains and advocates the recommendations to LAFCO from the Environmental Defense Center. LAFCO espouses the importance of the preservation of agriculture and open space, and I hope they will continue to do so. And if a little more stringently, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll take it back for council for discussion action. Who would like to start?
So as we were talking about like kind of the pros and cons, I understand the limiting the urban sprawl and the concerns with annexation. My only concern is that as we limit the city's ability to take in that land, we also limit the possibility that we can control what happens on that land. So that's just one con of saying, hey, we support it. We don't, you know, because the county pretty much can decide what they want to do right now. Whereas if we annex it in, maybe we'd have a little bit more control. Maybe not. I mean, it's difficult to say, but.
I kind of agree with you because I don't like tying our hands and committing one way or the other. I don't want to see any development on any ag land. Would this entail, for example, the commercial district down the bottom of the hill as far as annexation goes? Or are we just strictly dealing with agriculture? And I apologize for not knowing that.
It's open space and but here's the, one of the catches and Susan Bott can correct me if I'm wrong, but if we annex, we have to have a plan for what we're going to do with it. We cannot annex land just to keep it open.
They said we would be laughed at.
So, I mean, I understand the need to preserve our open space, maybe to annex areas that are currently in our sphere of influence. We have to have a plan for them.
I don't necessarily want to annex. I'm just pointing out that.
Well, I completely understand that it's an ability to control what happens around us in our open space that is around us.
Right.
But we'd have to have some sort of a plan for that. We have to know where we want our urban boundaries. I mean, this is a big, this has been coming down the pipeline for quite a while, and I think we're starting to really look it in the face right now. So, you know, prior council, people objected when they said, well, you know, maybe we should make a certain area annex and make certain areas a sports park. People kind of laughed at that and said, oh, we don't need another sports park. But you can't just annex to have open space. You have to have a plan for that. It would be great if we could.
That's why it's tough. That's why I would rather prefer to stay neutral in this and meet that head on if it ever comes to us.
Well, I mean, as far as, I mean, the city's in no condition to bring on any huge projects anyway, you know, with our infrastructure and everything that we need to do. So maybe going forward, you support it. It's going to make it a little harder, but I don't think it's impossible if we really wanted to say, hey, we really want to pull this in. I think that's a possibility.
I think at the end of the day, it's just kind of strengthening some of the policies to, you know, force cities to, when they move with annexation, to really have a more concrete, you know, plan that they can present. So I mean, it's one of those hard areas because we also have the cannabis item a little bit earlier. And the fear is, you know, that if we don't annex it and develop it, that you're going to have cannabis cultivation out there. So it's one of those kind of little, you know, rock between the hard spot. But, you know, I'm fully on plan with, you know, we need to find ways to fix the issues internally within Solvang and get things moving forward, have a sustainable budget before we're even looking at expanding it. So, you know, the others, you have currently Lompoc and Santa Maria that I believe has sent in letters. They want to encourage, you know, urban sprawl. So.
Yeah. That's how their cities are set up. They want it, yeah.
So, you know, this is hopefully, you know, supporting LAFCO and forcing cities to more look within and focus on infill and things like that before just, you know, responding with urban sprawl as being the answers to things. So with that, I'm fine with supporting the current letter suggested by, was it Carpenteria?
Goleeda.
Goleeda, sorry. The cannabis thing and the LAFCO.
The two cruel cities in the county, trying to solve.
So I'm fine with moving forward with supporting it. And I'll move that and see if I have this put to the table.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded.
Mayor Chisant?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dierneus?
I'm going to say no, only because I didn't have a chance to comment. But I'll make my comment brief then. I'm not against this idea. It's just that without further analysis from staff and guidance, I don't feel comfortable voting one way or the other for this, so I'm going to have to vote now.
You could abstain.
Councilmember Waite?
I feel like I don't, that I'm, I don't have a choice here because we haven't done our.
Due diligence.
Urban boundaries. We are at the mercy of the county of Santa Barbara if we go along with the Environmental Defense Center, the recommendation to LAFCO regarding Santa Barbara County agricultural I haven't seen the, this county of Santa Barbara really, you know, act in good faith when it comes to the cannabis cultivation. So, but we're not in line to annex or set boundaries right now. So at this point, I will, I will have to say yes and go with the Environmental Defense Center. Feel forced into that, but I'm going to say yes.
Mayor Pretim Clark?
I'm going to copy what Ms. Wisconsinperson Waite just said, but yes.
All right. Motion carries four one with Councilmember Dierneus, the dissenting no vote.
Okay. With that, move on to item number nine. Could we get a title readout?
Ad hoc committee for city attorney proposals. Action would be creation of an ad hoc committee for city attorney proposal review and designate two members to serve on the committee. Very, very briefly, as a staff report, the RFP for city attorney services has now been released for going on a month. We're starting to receive proposals in already. I've had indications from at least eight firms that they plan to submit proposals to provide the permanent city attorney services. It's not within the realm of possibility that we would have 10 or more, as there was no requirement to identify that a firm would be proposing. My original list of firms that we sent it out to, I've had a few firms that were not on that original list. They must have picked it up through, we published it on the League of California Cities City Attorney List served so that any firms capable of providing the services would see it. And so with that, this item is just consideration of council to reduce some workload. If you wanted to create an ad hoc committee, I know this council has had interest in ad hoc committees in the past to do some of, you know, two council members to do some of that legwork. There's any alternative that this council wants to consider. We just wanted to put it to you as an opportunity for some winnowing of the applicants down to something that may be more manageable from an interview perspective for the full council. That concludes my presentation. I did provide, you know, different alternatives in the staff report such as, you know, interviewing all firms by the council, the council individually reviewing all of the proposals and using some sort of scoring rubric or ranking system to identify the firms to bring in for interview, doing an ad hoc committee, and then proposing the firms is really the recommendation, or any other direction that city council desires.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions in the staff report? Seeing none. Public comment, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none. We'll take this back to the council discussion action. Who would like to start?
Well, I guess I'll start then. Personally, I'm really impressed with the work that Price Parma and Post have done for us, both in open session and closed session. And I found that his candor in explaining the legal issues to me when I have questions has been above and beyond anything that I've had prior to his being here. So as much as I think the RFP process is a good idea, I would like to simply say, I think we should just go ahead and move to instruct an ad hoc committee to go ahead and negotiate with PPP to secure their services going forward. I'm really impressed with them.
Karen?
I need to think about this.
I have no problem with an ad hoc committee or, you know, or even the RFPs as a council. I too am pretty, I think Chip's done a great job, so, you know, I guess he'd be someone that we obviously would consider. So whatever you guys feel comfortable with is fine.
Robert?
I'm extremely pleased with Price Parma and Post and the work that they've done and the candor and the advice. I don't think it'd be a horrible thing. I don't want to lead anybody on. I know kind of where I'm leaning, but to have an ad hoc committee to just look at.
An ad hoc committee to just, to look at some of the applicants, et cetera, and just take a look and come back with recommendations is fine with me. Doesn't mean we have to take it, but to have, I think for the residents as a whole would appreciate that, that we look at all of our options. So I'd be okay with an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Karen?
Okay. I do think we should have an ad hoc committee. I do think that we should look at all alternatives because our first alternative was for an interim attorney. So that's, that's what we put out there to the public was that we were looking at an interim attorney. So don't want to switch that up on the public. So I think we should now put it out there that we are looking to fill the position full time and have an ad hoc committee take a look at our options and go from there.
Great.
And yes, Chip, you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
And I would just like to sound, you know, everyone else, you're doing an amazing job. I know you're putting in way more work than what was even, you know, called for in the retainer that you honored for the first month worth of services. So I obviously highly encourage you to participate in the formal RFP. I'm also so happy, I'm more than happy to make you permanent city attorney, but I'm fine with the council, you know, we can go through the process, go through the RFP, see what else is out there, put an ad hoc with it, and just, you know, get it over and done with it.
Sure. So who wants to be on the ad hoc?
It might be most appropriate for the, it could be the finance committee that handles that, or any other selection. But I think of the.
The ad hoc committee is a temporary committee. We'd have to form a new ad hoc committee just for this. It is a temporary.
Right.
Committee.
Did you want to be on that? Is that why?
I would love to.
Okay. Does anyone else, any of the councilmembers desire to be on the ad hoc committee?
You?
I can if you want.
Chris and Daniel?
All right.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
Karen, did you want to be on it?
Yeah, would you like to be on it?
I, due to work constraints, excuse me, due to work constraints, not knowing how often this ad hoc committee would meet and how much work would be involved, and my travel schedule's picking up right now, so I would like to be on the ad hoc committee, but I will have to decline that.
Well, I think, I think what we would do, right, we would go through and bring back a variety, you know, we're not going to just.
No, correct.
So we're going to bring back a bunch of us to review anyway, so it's not like we're going to.
No, the ad hoc's not making the decision.
I would think you'd just be weeding certain things out. Like if we got 10 candidates and, you know, five of them are three hours away plus, you know, to Solvang, then we probably don't want to pay the portal, portal travel time for them to show up to each one of the council meetings. You know, that might be a reason why you might disqualify, you know, someone through that process.
Yeah, I mean, I trusted the ad hoc committee. I think we've seen a pool of candidates that have come forward already for the interim. So hopefully, we'll have some of the interim individuals come forward for the permanent position.
Okay. So who would like to be on the ad hoc committee?
The corners.
Sure, Chris and I'll do it.
I think we're being drafted, is that right?
Was there a second to that motion by the mayor?
I'll make a motion that Chris and myself form the ad hoc committee to review the RFPs received regarding the attorney contracts and then bring it back to the council for final decision.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Waite?
Yes.
Councilmember Dierneus?
Yes.
Mayor Pretim Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Chisant?
Yes.
Passes five oh. Okay. On to item number 10. We have council member committee reports and also I'll just remind anyone, if there's, you know, AB 1234, if you've been to any events the city has paid for, such as League of California Cities, you need to report out. I know we had one League of California Cities event that I went to. Learned a bit more about cannabis, which seems to be the hot item around here. Was anyone else at that event?
I attended, and it was an amazing event, especially the forum on cannabis. It was a six hour focus on what other cities have done and are doing, and some of the legal issues that they have encountered and addressed along the way, and how all the different, some cities, for example, Grover Beach essentially had adopted every license. And they were trying to figure out how to make all those licenses work, and they were really focused on the value add, not just, you know, the use of it, so to speak. So it was really interesting to see how a variety of cities across California were dealing with the cannabis issue from an economic standpoint and a legal standpoint and a social standpoint, how they brought the community in at the earliest possible opportunity, and then made sure that everything was done in a very transparent way to get the community feedback and the community buy-in if they were going to do that. And some of these cities have done incredibly well with their programs. So it was great. I really enjoyed that.
Robert, either of you?
I, as well. I didn't go to the cannabis meeting and the, at the two day meeting at the League of California Cities, but I find it invaluable to meet with other city councils, other mayors, to talk about tourism and marketing and all the issues that are important to their cities as well. It's a great opportunity to get feedback in a, in a more relaxed environment like that, and it was valuable. And I will also be going on the 17th, the JPIA evening meeting down in Orange County on the next week. And I was also at the. And I was also at the library advisory committee as an observer. Surely it was wonderful and pleasant to introduce me to everybody and I had a line of people lining up that wanted to talk to me afterwards. It was pretty neat, talking about libraries and it's something I'm very passionate about, so I like supporting the library.
So that settles the AB 1234 and then we have committee reports. Does anyone have any committees to report on? SB CAG, APCD, wastewater, library, groundwater sustainability act, water ad hoc and economic development. Oh, we did have a meeting with Bealton with regard to wastewater because we sat down with the mayor of Bealton and Rose Hess, the city engineer over there, and just talked about some of their wastewater challenges and it was, we also talked about how they even have even further difficulties with their wastewater plant where they require pre-treatment of wastewater before it even goes to their plant over there. Are they, does anyone else have anything to report on?
Sure. I did, which we didn't do committee reports at our last meeting, so I attended the North County Regional SB CAG where we spoke about transportation bicycle master plan. That seems to be an ongoing topic for the county right now. I will be attending the EMA meeting at the end of this month regarding the groundwater basins. We took interviews for, and reviewed interviews for the citizen action committee for the water and it was comprised of a mixed group of ranchers, vintners, local individuals. So I'll report out on the results of that at our next meeting, but I am really interested to know how all of this LAFCO and cannabis ordinance is going to play out with all of the large ranches and private well owners.
I'd like to make a comment for the Economic Development Committee, two things. One, a few weeks ago, time has passed so fast, we, I had invited the people from Mastercard Data, data analytics team to come out and talk with various members of the community to get the community feedback on the value of this kind of program. And from everything I heard from the different participants, they were very strongly in favor of this kind of thing. So I'd like to, we'll talk about this more in the council comments, but that's one issue. And then the second one was, I think Mr. Skid had come up and several others had less than kind words for us regarding chamber financing and things like this. So I just wanted to make, and I did, I think this should be included in the information that I sent to Dave, and you'll probably get this too. While we were down at the League of Cities, I had run across the mayor of Vacaville and he had mentioned a survey that the regional chamber of commerce has, I don't know what that entity's called, but it was a survey done by the regional authority for Chamber of Commerce. And he was kind enough to go ahead and give us that for what it was worth. And it was a survey of cities in the state of California as well as other states to see what they were spending on their chambers and what they were getting for that. So unfortunately, Mr. Skid's not here to hear some of the comments that we had heard and appreciate some of the things that we had learned and unfortunately, that's, you know, it's his loss for leaving so early. But it will be passed out, right? And I think to anybody else who wants a copy, it is freely available to everybody. And that really is the new philosophy, I think, that this council has. We want to get as much information into the hands of the public as possible and as often as possible.
I was able, just because I'm a part of that committee, I saw that as well. A very informative document. I'm just a CPA, as we all know. But it was very informative and I appreciate those documents.
Okay. Anything else under committee reports? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to council comments and requests. Who would like to start?
Well, I'll start and I want to thank our council and our city manager for making our Fourth of July parade a very fun and collaborative event. It was a really nice day. It was nice spending time with you all.
And I was really happy to see the turnout in the parade. There was a lot of floats this year. It was hard to keep up and tons of people really load up the town. It was a lot of fun, great event. So special thanks to the Rotary Club for, I think they kind of arranged some of that and then also the Fourth of July fireworks that everyone comes, which is another spectacular show right there. Let's see. I went to a little, a chamber mixer at the Dolphin Club, which is actually really interesting to see, but I guess Kim Jensen purchased, him and his wife purchased the Dolphin Club and they're going to be doing an Airbnb out of it, which I thought was really exciting to see because that property's been going through a lot of, I think it's fallen out of escrow more than three times and it's just been one of those really difficult ones to try to do something productive with. So it's exciting to see their efforts there and kind of turning that into a kind of a high-end Airbnb or business executive kind of retreat center. It's got five bedrooms in there, great landscaping, backyard and back. So I think that'll definitely be an asset for solving. Let's see. Last thing for my comments is I'd like to make sure that on the next meeting that the city attorney come back with some suggested updated council protocols. I know that's on our advanced calendar, but it just keeps getting kicked down the road, so...
Yeah, I agree. I saw it was like June 2020. I'd like to see that brought forward immediately since it's a reflection of this council's view on policy and protocol. I don't feel comfortable working with the previous council's protocols.
I agree with that.
Okay, so city attorney to come back with that. And I think that's it for my, for my comments tonight. It's been, it's been quite the sprint. So I'm happy to, that we'll have a meeting off, have a little break and I'm excited to see what staff comes back with, you know, following their, the staff retreat, so. Does anyone else have any council comments?
All I say is that, it's funny because I'm not a fan of riding in floats and I don't think people want to look at city representatives on floats. They want to look at astronauts and war heroes, but it was really fun. And the reaction from the crowd was really cool, the way the kids waved and smiled and it was fun engaging because you're so close to the crowd. You can pick out certain people and comment on their attire and I actually had a really good time. And I never knew that the parade only lasts at half an hour because we were done so quickly that I ended up walking the entire parade. So I had a really good time and it was one of the fun things about being on city council.
Daniel?
The Fourth of July fireworks, I made it back.
Can you add a little more in the...
I made it back in time for the fireworks. I missed the parade unfortunately, or fortunately, not quite sure. But the fireworks were great and, you know, I didn't have, I didn't sit over there with you guys, but I assumed that it was fantastic from there as well, so.
We gave away your VIP tickets, so you couldn't sit with us.
You couldn't fit in the truck anyway.
I wanted to add briefly, first of all, kudos to the San Andres Rotary for doing all of that. It actually was the San Andres Rotary instead and they did an incredible job putting the parade together and the fireworks and all that kind of stuff. So thank you so very much to them. I know they're not here to answer for it, but... Secondly, the parade itself, as you guys mentioned, was amazing. To me, the joy is watching the kids' faces. They just, they were dancing and celebrating and I, we need more of that in Solvang, more events like that to celebrate families coming together. And more interesting to me was people were coming from Bealton and other cities to celebrate in our parade and I'd love to see more of that kind of valley-wide participation, whether it's, you know, them coming here or we're going to Bealton to celebrate their, you know, their events. I love that kind of thing, so kudos to those who put this together. Fantastic stuff.
One little side note, I lived down in Alasol Glen and it's the first year on the Fourth of July that cars are parked all the way down to the river and walked up. So I've not seen that even for, I don't think for...
So you're telling me we need more parking garages?
No, it was just a great turnout.
So with that, are we, have a little presentation here with, it looks like, I see on here it says a Mastercard Solving Spend Index Discussion, Councilmember Dearnes.
That's up to Councilmember Dearnes. You had brought it for the last meeting, since we had time after the last meeting, we threw it on here. It's in the agenda packet. If you want to just speak to it, you can, you can talk about it on the screen. Fully up to you, sir.
Do you want to flip through a few and speak to a few things or...
Sure. I think it's, because I want to bring this back. I want to go ahead and with your, with the support of the council, I think we should continue the discussion with people like Mastercard. They're certainly not the only ones doing this. But there's two or three types of data that they produce and at the same time, the way they present it is very informative too. I think what we're looking at here is the question of spending based on Mastercard users for three weeks, three consecutive weeks, the week before, during and after Danish days. And this is a question that I had because I know that we're asked to fund certain events and I'm not picking on anybody in particular, it's just how it happened. I was thinking of Danish days when the question came up. So I suggested let's take a look at how that money affected the outcome, we'll call it the return on investment for spending. So this would be, I guess, the week before because I think the Danish days was the 16th and 17th of 2018. So this would be the week before now. If you notice, wait, 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 wait. If you notice the, those areas in deep red or purple have the highest concentration of spending vis a vis the rest of it. Those in the yellow, you can see just from a visual standpoint, they're much smaller. So take note of that as we go through the next slide.
Chris, if you could explain what is that center that's the most red? What part of solving is that?
That is actually solving and I appreciate you bringing that because to the left you see Highway 101. That would be Bealton.
Okay, so, all right, got it now.
And to the north, you see Los Alamos.
Get up and like say, this is Los Salivos, this is, I think that would help.
Get, we'll give them a laser pointer.
No, I think you should get up.
Just solving?
You actually want me to get up?
Yeah, get up, get over here and explain yourself.
We have a laser pointer right here, Chris, just...
Well, here, kitty kitty.
So, Chris?
Is that working? Yeah, perfect.
State your name.
I am Chris Dearnes. Let's see, no, not that button. Ah, there we go. So this would be solving right here. This is Bealton. I guess this is San Andres region. This would be Los Salivos and Los Alamos. And you can see the week before, the concentration of spending. Interesting lift is on the west side of solving. This would be the east side. All right, so this is the week of the Danish days. I guess the 16th would be a Saturday. Sunday would be the 10th. And you can see the change here is the most significant. If you flip back to the previous, Los Salivos was here the week before and during the week of Danish days, it skyrocketed. Now, I'm not saying that we didn't have good spending pattern here, but we spent $30,000 to attract tourists and keep them here and they all went to Los Salivos. That's what that information's telling us. And then next week, it drops back down to something more normal. So I thought this kind of information is really practical in helping the city as well as the businesses to figure out what's working and what's not, at least as a tool. At the same time, the same databases can be used for predictive analytics to target more of like a digital campaign process where we say, okay, we now know where these people are coming from and we know how much they're spending and where they're spending it. So what we want to do now is create a targeted campaign to essentially attract those individuals from Southern California, for example. I think that's pretty much it for this round. Whoa. Okay, wait, wait. This is actually real, I didn't see this one before. So this is Danish days, right? And is this Los Alamos? Yeah, that's Santa Maria. Sorry, that's Santa Maria.
Versus the previous week.
Danish days versus the previous week.
Well, they have Los Alamos days, do you remember?
That's in September, oh yeah, you're right, it is in September.
At the same time as Danish days?
So maybe it came before. It says versus the previous week.
Los Alamos days, so it's in September and I don't know...
No, it's not.
Are you sure it's not the same weekend as Danish days?
Well, I don't, it says Danish days versus previous week, so the previous week.
Maybe it's the previous week they did Los Alamos.
That's what I'm guessing. Unfortunately, there's no, without further information. But that's where, you know, the team is made up of data engineers that will help the users to extract the most valuable intel from the database. You just ask the question and they will help you do it. Now, the better, assuming that we were to do this as a city or some other group, they would become, eventually become very proficient at it and they could do it on their own. But initially, we simply have to ask them, we want to see this and what's working and what's not, right? So for example, if you wanted to look at the Grand Fondo, something that was brought up earlier by Mr. Skid in a very unfavorable way, we would be able to say, well, Ed, this is, you know, hopefully it'll show that it was a success and we can say, well, Ed, this is why we want to do this. Or in other words, before we go and do another event, we can say, well, for example, the Amgen event, we can say, well, Amgen, when they were here, ended up creating this kind of return on investment, this kind of spending pattern that we could potentially exploit and take advantage of in terms of attracting tourists for hotel stays and things like this. So that's the beauty of this process and I think this is something that we as a council should look at and decide whether it's useful and worth funding in some way. And in fact, the other thing I want to make clear is we don't have to fund this ourselves in isolation. We can certainly go out and talk to all the rest of the community and figure out, do they want to participate? Because this would be something that everybody in the valley would be able to benefit from, right? So if we spread the cost across everybody's desk, I think it'd become much more affordable.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, end of September. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't entertain this from the floor, but at the same time, he's just showing examples of what data can do. You know, it's, we're not trying to speak for any particular day. It's just simply examples of what data polls can do, so you can start looking at what happens.
Exactly, exactly. In fact, it was, there was another set of slides we didn't talk about which actually showed the east end versus the west end of solving and the spend that was going on. And it was astonishing because unfortunately, like a shopping mall, it demonstrated that we have a real spending revenue problem, let's put it in a different way, with respect to the east end. They're not doing well. Now we have to figure out why.
I wouldn't prejudge anything based on what, I mean, this just shows great examples of what can be done with the data and you can start pulling those different, you know, if you start putting those dates of events, both what's happening here in solving or what's happening within our sphere of influence, you will begin seeing, you know, how those events impact solving or the neighboring communities and that is valuable data to start tailoring events that we can most benefit off of. So thanks for the, you know, it's good data. Be nice to see at some point, you know, some kind of project like that could be, you know, launched that would, that would give that kind of data and intel to the business community where I think it's probably a little bit more appropriate. Anyway, with that, I believe we're done with council comments and requests. Unless anyone else has anything else to say?
I just want to say that if you look, I mean, it's interesting looking at this. You have to look at the dates, the industry, because we know Los Salivos is wine, 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 and the people. So maybe the people are all coming here for Danish days, which gives more people that might travel up during the day at some point to Los Salivos for one day. So it'd be nice to know the exact dates and the events.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't draw any conclusions off of what was presented.
Our events could be bringing people in, but they could be going other places.
Yeah, and then I actually appreciate the fact that we're talking about this because this is what I think Ed Skid was lambasting us about. He doesn't understand the direction, the future is in understanding the data, acquiring the data and using it to make intelligent decisions or we can do more with... and using it to make intelligent decisions where we can do more with less because this is a much more cost-effective way to do digital marketing.
I agree.
Okay, with no other comments, we will move into, we have closed session. David, can I get a title readout?
Yeah, Government Code Section 54957.6, Conference with Labor Negotiators. Agency representative is David Gassway, City Manager, and the employee organization is Teamsters Local 986. And then a second topic is Government Code Section 54957, Public Position, Special City Auditor.
With that, we are in closed session.